Chair today. It's usually easier here.
I know.
I'm for him.
I need an approval of the agenda.
This, I mean, did this.
Yep. Yep. I think your email this yesterday, if I remember. I'll move to. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we need to approve the minutes from June eighteenth and the twenty-fifth. And those came in an email yesterday also.
I did not print them out.
Yeah. Um, I.
It was the provisional budget and that couple minutes that you guys did for the flood.
Yeah. The one is for the flood. And, uh, that was a ten.
Ten minute one.
Yeah.
It was literally short.
And then the other one is when we did the provisional budget. So.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Sherry Kniffling, Hans nine-one-one.
Well. Where is any Hans nine-one-one?
We're gonna be Monday at tribal team. Informational, we're not making any kind of decisions and that's exactly what they're gonna find out.
Well. I've been harping on this now for five years, I believe. And it's no further today than it was five years ago.
But we can't do it on our own.
Why?
We don't have the funds to make a nine-one-one.
Uh, well. I believe that there, that Huron would do it.
Well, we've talked to them and we've talked to Mitchell. And we are going to meet with the tribe Monday and get the information together as to what it will cost.
It's gonna cost us something every month.
Yeah.
Well, here's, here's the deal.
And we know what the problem is.
What?
Nobody knows where we live.
Right, but we also don't have anybody that answers the dispatch calls that knows what the hell they're doing.
Yes, and we're trying.
And that isn't gonna change.
If we go with these other places. Mitchell will take us and we'd like to stay with Mitchell because rural county is with Mitchell. And Mitch, or rural county's sheriff works with us. So that would help us. Because we're next door. But nobody will give us an exact cost.
I don't think it's coming today.
Well, I talked to Wes this morning and he said that Huron said that for ninety percent of what we get from nine-one-one, they would take us on.
Yes.
And what's ninety percent of what we take in every month?
I'd have to look.
It's, well, what is your charge? What is your charge on your phone? Two dollars? Well, I'm thinking that it's, it's ninety percent of that.
That should be in there.
Of what you. Because they send that all to the county.
It's appro, it's approximately ten thousand. That's a year.
A year.
Yeah.
So like, I'm, I'm thinking it's like thirty, maybe a hundred dollars.
We get them on a plane.
Yeah, if we're lucky, we get a hundred dollars.
Well, what he said was that for ninety percent of what we get as a county from nine-one-one, they would take us on in Huron.
And we have not heard that.
We don't have anything written.
In twenty-three.
That's why we wanted the information. Let's sit down and let's talk because we talk to everybody, so we talk to each other and we don't go nowhere. I agree with you.
I, I understand. Well, I'll tell you what, there's something about laying on the floor waiting for an ambulance to come that makes you think that this is a necessity. Not just something that we're gonna talk about money or maybe next month or next year, whatever.
I hear you. That's the same way with us. If we're in our districts and we call nine-one-one, let's say you're on the road, they can't find you either, you know?
Oh, I know.
And we wanna make sure, the one thing I wanna make sure is that it covers the reservation also. That it's not just part of it. That's gotta be the whole thing. This, and there's another thing, that that question has been brought.
What's that?
That it will cover this part and not that part and the districting and all that. Until they say they're gonna cover us as a whole because we are a whole.
Well, I'm not aware that they aren't going to cover the whole.
Well, that's been a question when I did some talking and called to them.
Well, I, honest to God, don't think you're gonna get a serious offer from anybody until you are serious about it. I mean, yeah, we'll question this one, we'll question that one, but you're not getting anything solid until they know you're serious.
And we are.
We're pushing for that.
We're pushing for that.
And that's why I wanted the down meeting. And then we was talking about, well, you're gonna have two of them together, that's something illegal or whatever. Just taking information on, why should one of us talk to somebody when three of us may have questions?
I'm going to Harthamson on, on Monday to meet with them. And Dina is probably going to. Now whether Rex will go, I don't know.
But you're more than welcome to come.
Well, I would like to see some progress rather than just lip service.
Like I've said about this, tribes been talking about this for several years. They've always been.
So then you got ten's money, they get over there and say your piece, okay?
Yeah.
That's all I can, I do what you talk to us all you want. You go over there and you say your piece to them, but we have nothing to do with those guys.
We have the choice of where we choose.
Yeah, you do.
Are you sure?
Your windmill.
Government's gonna cover.
That's what we're going to find out.
Well, I thought we was gonna have somebody from Huron do it today.
We were, this, here's.
See, that's why we need to sit down and talk about it.
Here's the deal.
Two weeks ago, yep.
Here is the deal. They're having their meeting on Monday. If they came, they can't say what we would do till they have their meeting. No different than us making a decision.
Well, okay, so then you go over there and they're gonna say, yep, yep, this money's coming and we're gonna cover it, yep, for sure. When we say, yep, let's go for it, then three years later.
No, that's not what it's about.
Well, tell them when they get their stuff set up, then call us.
Who are you meeting with?
Talk about.
It's the, it's their tribal monthly meet.
It's their business meeting.
Yes, it's the business meeting.
We're first on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, and nine-one-one is a big concern for them too? Okay, I mean, I get the same question there, so that's why we need to sit down and talk about this stuff. Okay? Uh, it's my understanding the guy from the state's supposed to be there, that new one that was sitting in here that time.
Chase said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, we're, we're trying, and District Three's gonna be there too? Okay, this guy from mid-state. What we have in the bank right now would probably cost, would be what we needed to, in, what is it called? The internet. Help me out. Boost it up or whatever it is.
Yes.
That, that hundred and sixty thousand, that's gone, that goes to mid-state, no matter what we do. Okay, that's why we're trying to aim on it. Look how long it took us to save up a hundred and sixty thousand, Cheryl. You know what I'm saying? So let's, if we're gonna spend it, let's spend it right.
But we.
I hear you.
At the, at the cost of having no service basically during that time.
We don't keep it though, none of us do.
Well.
And I hear what you're saying. Like if I have one of our residents out in Hughes County, which is part of our reservation, they call nine-one-one, Pierce got nine-one-one, doesn't it? Pierce is just as upped as ours, man. They gotta find out where you are, they find out you're on the rest and they turn around and they send you down here. So I mean, it, it's this whole system. I hear you, Cheryl. Glad to see you though.
All right, let's move on.
And you're welcome to come.
Superintendent.
What time is it, I'm sorry?
One, we're on the agenda for one.
One.
Eleven.
Eleven, so.
One o'clock.
Yo, Beth, on light of three forty-eight, ethanol three oh five, number two guy is three ten.
Can I have a motion to accept a fuel bid?
To accept.
All in favor? Okay?
I wish we'd get more than one, not, no offense to that guy, but I know. Last time, I think it was because of the size of our tank.
Well, why don't we do that guy, just get away from monthly bids and go to six month or a year long bids? And that's great. Cause then, then somebody might think, well, like they once a year.
Might be something.
But gas moves up and down so much. Could be lucky at the bottom, could be unlucky at the top.
Yeah.
But I think it had something to do with the size of our tank.
Yeah, they don't wanna.
They don't have a bigger tank.
I'm gonna work on that.
All right, resolution?
Resolution, they're sitting there. It is, we are going to apply for the preliminary engineering big grant for the Larson Bridge. We sent in for a federal bid program. We, I emailed them the other day.
We were supposed to know.
Supposed to know in June, they said they pushed it back to the end of summer, really early fall. So we talked to the state and they said, go ahead and apply for this, this way.
This is a state grant or is this the federal?
This is the big through the state.
Yeah, and the reason we don't have the application here is because they changed it and actually I got the email five minutes before I walked in the door, it's finished. So we just need to sign this resolution today because it has to be in by the end of July, so if we sign the resolution out, that way you're basically giving me permission to apply for it.
Okay, I need a motion to sign the resolution or not?
Do you have an estimate of what our percentage? I'm sorry. And you probably told us, I just.
There ain't gonna be much different than last year, not a lot, I mean, it probably be some, but.
It was around a hundred pounds, wasn't it?
For the preliminary part, I can't remember.
Oh, this is the preliminary.
Yeah, I don't, it ain't that.
Right.
I don't remember what it is.
It should be under that.
The whole project will be like seven fifty dollar cost.
Yeah.
Preliminary, I, I was thinking of like fifty.
Yeah, forty or fifty thousand, something like that.
If you need to know that, I can figure it out, but. So I'm gonna accept.
All in favor?
Yeah, okay.
Are you done, Sharon?
Uh, just like that, that means that.
Oh, okay.
I think do her thing to it, I believe.
Yeah.
This is just some of the maybe stuff. This was a training, we had an LTOP come out. I'm not sure why I took pictures, I did. Here's some of the water, that's what's been going on lately. I don't have all the pictures on here, I just threw some on. That's some of the damage, it ate through, through the base. Also, it's not just the gravel missing, it's the base gone. Pictures don't really do them justice.
Right.
There's a culvert. Basically lost and pushed down. So there's a, this is just a estimate of where we're at right now for damages. Shows three twelve, which is going up. So far. I don't know, we're on that thing, so that's good. But anyway, that's just pictures of that, so. So we've been blading mowers, spraying, fixing culverts, maintenance, uh, say benefits, loss control came out, did their little walk around deal, we had to move up. Our def jug was in the way of one of the doors, but did that.
Okay, and Tanner? Explain that we can't really fix the roads yet.
Right.
We, we can only ban them.
I, I can start next week, yep. I could blade them, I had to wait to get approval to even run a blade across them to get something on. Now, well, I think I can start fixing them next week. Through one, I can, cause I'm, so there's, the FEMA deal is gonna go through emergency management. And so we're working with them. Then there's also emergency relief fund for federal aid routes through the DOT. And so we're working on that too, so a federal aid route would be Shelby Road, on the Lee Road.
Was it the Larson Road?
Larson Road, yeah. Anyway, so, so we're, it's kinda screwed up deal and I'm not sure how it all pays out, but so we're working with them too, they're two separate deals. But we can, through emergency, or through federal, emergency relief through the federal aid routes, I can start on those, so that's probably the rule to start. And we could fix anything that is an absolute emergency like the culvert on your plate, we could fix that. But we got it, pictures and all that. So that could be fixed, but nothing where it's just, where it's passable, can, we couldn't fix it.
So all of, so all of that stuff that, where your stuff was going, you can't fix that till we get the approval?
Yeah.
I bladed it over it, so there's something there, it looks a little better than it did, but it's not.
It's not a, like that if between Calvin's and us for that.
Yeah, it's still really.
It's, but not like it was.
And then that.
Sinkhole or anything like that.
No, uh-uh.
Been working on these bridge grants and I found a new grant we're trying for for culverts. And I'm not sure how that would turn out though. Did get the grant for the EADs. So I got approved for, I sent in for three of them and it's a cost share deal, the way it kinda looks is roughly that. There, there, one will cost us anywhere from eleven hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. And we did get approval, we don't have to take three, that's just what I sent in for. And then I have one right here and this came from Tommy out at the tribe. He gave this to donate to courthouse. So we need to put it up somewhere, so.
We do have.
Thank him very much for that, so.
In here.
The sheriff has a simulator, but outdated.
Yeah, that's a totally different.
He got that one. So is there instructions on that too? I mean, easy to read instructions, I mean, it's one thing to have the machine and then not know how to use it.
I honestly don't know, but.
Probably haven't opened it or anything.
I haven't done nothing, but I brought it here.
It's pretty self-explanatory once you open it.
You know what I'm saying?
Right, it shows you how to do everything.
People are panicked, they're not gonna go and read everything.
When I said the other day, it, it, it's Tommy was there, but it talks you, I mean, it tells you everything.
Okay.
The wild, so. So we did get that, so I guess if, I would like to purchase more, whether it be one or two. I won't own a pickup after that deal, I think there's no reason for a thousand dollars of, save someone's life by owning one. As much as we're on the road or a phone call away.
And I'm not so sure it would be a good idea for the fire department.
I think they have one. The only other thing I, but I need to double check that, but I think they do.
And probably the sheriff.
Yeah, but he gives his through Homeland Security.
Oh, okay.
Didn't say he was applying for.
He is like, yeah, I think he's up for, he is, his is outdated, but he's up for a new one, but I can double check with him on that.
Okay.
The only other one I thought about was Wes. I'd put one in for our shop, but the three of us there, and if I have one in a pickup, that's probably, I would. But it's whatever you guys think, but I, I want one. I don't wanna go through that shit again, ever. So I guess I want your guys' opinions, what do you think? One, two, or none, or what?
Do you know cost, do you know cost, kinda?
Eleven to fifteen hundred.
Eleven to fifteen hundred, roughly.
We, we pay thirty percent of that?
No.
No, that's, that's our cost.
That would be our.
They're three to five thousand bucks, or twenty-five hundred to five thousand, depending on what you go with.
Can you justify three? I know you said you're a pickup.
Well, that's just it, I mean.
If we need.
I'm, I'm also looking at this and maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but I'm also looking at it for the community, not just here. So if you wanted one to go to the community, whatever that's called, that's fine, or if you want one in the shop, that's fine, I want one in my pickup. If you think Wes should have one because he's an assistant emergency manager, that, I mean, we could do that too, but I only put in for three. And I don't know.
God, I thought he told me he had one.
No, he checked prices.
Is that what he did?
He was just gonna buy one on his own.
Okay, he was gonna buy one on his own.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I knew there was, cause he called me the other day, well, and even today. And I couldn't remember what he said, so, okay.
It ain't really, I don't, it's not a tool, so I feel, I think I better ask you guys if I can buy one at least for me, but.
Can I have a motion or?
I'll, I'll probably get through it, does what he wants, if he can justify three.
You know, but I mean.
Community is for the community.
The one would go, I don't know, somewhere, I mean.
Well, there's.
Whether it be down here, I don't know where the best place is, and, and I would talk to the fire department first, cause if they need one, I think.
If they need one, give them one, give one for Wes and give one for your truck. Yeah, but we have that one here in the building.
And I don't care if it comes out of my budget, I don't care, here's one, so.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, it'd be nice, so if they get, so they get notified too on these deals. I don't know what happened, but like Wes said, he never heard about it, that was long ago.
Right. And hopefully that'll fix a lot of these problems and then there's a future with that, so. Yeah, I'll get, figured out.
Do I have a second?
Girl, second. So you approved three?
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I need three, yeah, three.
Anything else, Tanner?
How long do they last roughly, like when, how old would it be? They can last a long time.
There's a couple of different, couple of different ones, I mean, they go from four to, I think, ten years, something like that. And then, then they need to be sent in and refurbished.
Might need to battery along the way.
Yep, then it has a battery life, like this one, I don't know, but the one I was looking at today was five year battery.
And you don't charge them? Does he even need an license or something?
No. Um, yeah, other than that, I've just been working with crisis truck and trying to get that all figured out, which. Yeah, we're mowing and mowing should hopefully be done tomorrow, but finger strokes.
You're talking mowing, is that what you're referring to? All right.
Yeah, they parked at our place last night.
Good, I don't wanna start a fire.
Don't quit raining when mowing, certainly. That's about it for me, I guess, I think.
Thank you, Tanner.
Thank you.
Uh, Lee?
Hey. Um, quick weed and pest update. The board met June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, just a quick recre, uh, recap. Uh, we talked about sprayer upgrades, the new tank. Um, and that's all been taken care of. Um, spraying has begun and should be wrapped up this week, I believe.
Open.
Hopefully, yeah. Weather permitting.
It's not raining again.
Right. Uh, let's see, grant money received for the season, it's all been used, so the grant for twenty twenty-five has been approved by the state at sixty-one hundred, so to get all that, we spend twelve-two, it's a fifty percent thing. Uh, up until sixty-one hundred, we, we get fifty percent. You get all the grant if you spent twelve-two, so. If that makes sense, uh, that was the most of what was discussed there. I've been around, I'm working out some bugs with the District Three app to mark locations. We were, it was out on some roads, uh, and it's, in some areas, not as bad as you think, and then in other areas, yep, it's as bad as you think, so. Uh, trying to get those marked, that's in the pastures and, and whatnot, so. Um, other than that, that's about it for the weed and pest update. Uh, equalization, uh, I've got an appointment set for one new home for an appraisal. Uh, there's another one I've been working on that wasn't very well received, but, uh, we're still working on them, so get that.
There's three new houses.
Pardon?
There's three new ones.
Yep, yep. So I'll move on to the second one. Uh, there was somebody from the state that was gonna come and help with that, I'll have to work with them. That's kinda hard to coordinate with the homeowner. And, uh, as it turns out, I'm scheduled to meet with him the day after that Patty will be in the area, so we'll just make it work. She's out this week, so.
So how long have these new homes been on?
Well, let's see, the construction improvement form was completed on a new shed. And then it was after that that the new house was put on. And that was in April of twenty twenty-one. And then there was another one, and I forget the date, I think it was about the same time, that's the new house uh, that I'm gonna go assess. And the third one, they never, they never completed a construction improvement form that we send out. So that one was just.
Oh, yeah, they're living in it.
Oh, how does that work then, Steve? I mean.
How did it work when they?
When they, yeah, I mean, they know what they have to do.
Yeah, well.
I, I guess this is a very.
What was, what was discussed in our.
Never talked about before.
Yeah, district meeting is that if, if they don't allow you on, you can assess from the road. And you just do the best you can.
Okay, so that thing's been in existence, it was two thousand twenty-one, that's these three years. So do you go back and assess them for three years?
I don't think so.
Only forward.
Well, so it doesn't work to their benefit for them to come truthfully? That's a hell of a deal. Now, those are the ones they oughta put out on Facebook.
Yeah.
Those are those ones, you're tracking the wrong ones.
All right, the US, uh, US.
No, I'm talking about putting them out on Facebook.
Oh, we're on Facebook, yeah.
Get his dead knee.
Lower the intake than the others.
And I did draft a letter for, uh, you know, what other counties do is, is send a notice that they're, we're planning appraisals in an area. I drafted a letter, I don't think we're gonna need it, cause I've been reaching out to them via telephone and the one I have scheduled was, I mean, welcoming, I mean, so the other one, not so much, but we'll keep, we'll keep that.
Yeah, and there are two of them in the same town.
Yeah. Actually, three.
Is that confidential then?
What's that?
Names, what we're trying to do? How confidential is this though?
Their assessments?
Assessment?
Yeah.
In general, they're not confidential, I mean.
If it goes delinquent, it would.
But.
Well, they haven't, they haven't.
But I'm just saying, I think just the delinquent aspect of things is, is that.
Well, like you're, and when you do an assessment, it goes into the treasure office, there, it exists, that, those things are all there. How we got there and our contacts, I would think we would, they should not be generally just that drop.
No names, yeah. Okay, uh, there's a course in pier, let's see, July twenty-third and twenty-fourth. I need to take, um, the cost is three fifty. And, uh, that's, I gotta get books yet too, that's a fifteen hour USPAP course.
It's on twelve C. It's down there, it's July twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
Okay. Um, let's see, board meeting, I guess that is it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There was one hospitalization, I gave that to.
No, it truly, it truly not a, I mean, it's a, uh, it's a blood draw, it's a blood draw.
Oh.
Hundred and twelve dollars. Uh, blood draws are a different deal, we, we generally have to pay those because they, they cut, and they come out of the.
Okay.
Uh, the.
Judicial.
Our, our budget, space drink.
Yep.
Hundred and twelve bucks.
So we have to pay that?
We have to pay it even if it's, uh.
Right.
You just wanna set it aside, that's my only cost.
It was probably off your eyes, my highway patrol, but I can't see for sure.
I didn't even look and see who because.
I wasn't familiar with the officer.
There's probably two here, but I'll give it back. I'll put it up here.
Oh, just go, okay, perfect.
Don't lose it. No, no, he's gonna lose it. This, this is.
So, and so that's the update on that one, so when you see that, you'll see that I'll add another additional voucher.
Okay.
So that will be approved on that one, so. Treasure auditors report, I just handed that out, I did that earlier in the month too on the provisional, but I don't think we really talked about it, so. It continues to match, so that's a good thing. Um, and then C provisional budget, I know that the commissioners should meet some baby meat sometime between the end of the month.
Yeah, we have to have it in too, yeah, between the fifteenth and thirtieth of July.
So have we heard any comments back from staff or anything on?
No, so then what'll happen is as soon as you guys say yes to that, then I send it to Deb and Deb puts it in the newspaper.[1764.44] And then, so then there'll be public comment after that. So. I hope Deb will do that for me.
Well. If it isn't next week. It'll be the week of the twenty-second, the week of the fifteenth, I'm gone.
We, you're, you're going the week of the fifteenth. Okay.
A central, then I got.
The twenty-second, I have got, in the morning, have got that visual training with, uh, Arlen. So that, that's the one that you could take. This is the twenty-second for, that we have to take.
Cause I think that's my central.
So.
Are you doing that in person?
No, I, I can do it visual on, on my computer and though.
That's cool.
Like on the Zoom.
Yep.
So, yeah. So, and that's from eight to twelve, I believe. So, um. Any, any other day of that week at this point, it looks like I'm. Okay. Rex.
I think.
So.
You do it in the evenings or whenever you guys want to, that's for you guys?
Do it on Tuesday, the twenty-third? You want to? Rex?
One o'clock.
One o'clock? Okay. July twenty-third, one o'clock.
Two o'clock, you said?
One o'clock.
That's it, that's it, right?
Mm-hmm. All right.
We come and sit at that too?
Yeah. You can, you don't have to.
They're just the ones that are.
I didn't know.
Confirm or.
Yeah.
Well, if there's any kind of changes or something that you really want to push for.
Yeah.
So whatever happened with the courthouse improvements?
Well, I, I'll, I'll go ahead.
I forgot.
He forgot, but I'll go ahead and bring it up on nine here. So, um, Tanner, myself, and Lee all had a meeting with, his name was Matthew Peterson. And he comes every three years. And so he he number one said that, that it's not his place to say it, but it is getting pretty dated. The bathrooms are looking pretty tough. And so you'll see up here where courthouse improvements, roof leaks, ceiling tiles and restroom. There was somebody that came to use the restroom in the women's bathroom and kind of almost fell off because the bolts are not working any longer. Things like that, so we do have that in the budget, that's seven thousand for building improvements, I think is what it's called in there. So I'd like to have permission for maybe Lee to call. I think somebody gave you some people from Miller or some other place. I think probably some new toilets might be.
The men's is the same way.
Men's bathroom is, is really bad.
Have they, uh, have they said anything about it being handicap accessible? Did they, did that get brought up?
I want. Didn't bring it up a whole lot in regards to that, cause they already have been saying that for probably twenty years, so. I do know, he said we should probably get that other handicap accessibility of, yeah, we're not using both. So, or if we only want to use one, that, that door should always be open and this one shut need be, so. We're just kind of talking a little bit about that. Tanner had already kind of alluded to one little glitch, but that was taken care of immediately, so went ahead and took a picture, he took a picture of it. I sent it off to him, so everything is good, so both of us should be able to get our little stickers from, from there, and Lee with that part too. Looked at our, um, closets. And there is a, a problem in our closets here. But I did tell him that we're looking into shelving and we have talked about that here that we do know. So he gave us a pass on that one, if it's not done by next year, so.
They must have had a sale on those things.
So.
It's the utility room.
Yeah.
And there's.
So.
Things in there that shouldn't be, so.
So, very nice guy, it was very, um. Sheriff did not come to it, and so he asked some questions. I answered what I could in regards to the sheriff's aspects of things. And then suggested maybe he call Wayne. So.
Okay. He knew he was coming though, right?
Everybody got the same emails, you got that email too, right?
Yep.
So.
He just did this office, he didn't go up and do? This isn't the guy that does the insurance for. Old Legion Harder?
No, those, those brothers, one of those brothers from Plankton.
You pay into the pool and then these guys basically come around and tell you how to not get in trouble. I mean, that's.
Well, it can be in compliance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can, they wouldn't walk in here and give you a ticket or a file or anything, they're, they're here to help us.
Yeah.
Through our association.
Yep.
So.
Um. So, I, do we, do you have any recommendations of maybe getting the new toilets or are we just gonna? Do we have to go out for bids or something on that, Steve, or?
Not that, no, not so much, no.
What's the dollar?
Well, it's twenty-five or fifty, Ben, which.
Do you think?
Fifty.
You're, you're all right.
If you talk to more than one person, I would say.
Oh, definitely, get bid or not get a quote or.
But bids are, I mean, talking to two or three people differently than doing bids.
Yeah.
Bid you publish, you open.
We still have that ongoing bid that's open right now for the roof. So if we, cause they came and sealed it or did, did like a Band-Aid to it, but it's starting to leak a little bit again.
So on the twenty-seventh, um, well, it was during that heavy rain, I wrote it down, I think it was the twenty-seventh. I could hear a drip in there. I didn't see it, but I could hear it, and I even got a video of it. So, it, I think was dripping in maybe on the tile or towards the end of them. But, uh, was it last year, I mean, water come in on the floor, but not this time, but I could hear it, hear it enough to get it on the video too, so. The roof will be an issue.
Definitely, it's a couple of years, so.
So.
That's that one. I can go keep going on ten here as the Aflac representative. We do have an Aflac, you got to, you know him probably more than the rest of us, that was that Sean. And so, Dinita happened to see him in the parking lot, and he came in here to introduce himself, he's, he through Risty Benefits is now working with Aflac and Risty Benefits to us, so. Um, he wants to come meet with all of you guys and just do a face-to-face and.
So we got rid of the one in each other?
Yes.
So he's here now?
He was here this last week.
Oh.
Just stopped.
So, yeah, stopped in to introduce himself and said that he's gonna start overseeing Buffalo County, and if we wanted to add anything.
Oh, okay.
He could just get ahold of, of, yeah. So. Um, I did not bring my certificate right now, the South Dakota Elected Officials Continuing Education Certificate. Um, whoever wants the certificate, it's not a mandated thing, but it's due by the fifteenth, so. Then you, you get a certificate and a, a thing of appreciation, did you happen to get ahold of? Does it go through?
No, I, I don't have to do that.
Okay, I wasn't sure on that one. So. That's not, then we have some upcoming trainings going on, so you'll see A, B, C, and D. Some of them aren't till next month, but we'd already talked about Lee's thing, the council's at, on B is at, uh, one o'clock, you said?
One o'clock. So back to, um, are, are we given some guidance on this bathroom, are we forgetting it?
I think we need to do something with it. We can't go down with the bathroom.
And if we were gonna do it, I'd like probably do more handicap accessibility toilets, cause they're pretty pretty low right now, so. Probably for the men's restroom in regards to that, do I, I think you have railing in there, don't you, because I don't know.
Yeah, there is, come to think of it, yeah.
So.
So just two new toilets, I guess.
Something that bathroom problems before for toilet expenses?
Well, I, I, that, it wasn't a big thing.
No.
I'd say talk to them, keep them, and then come back next month and then you can say, yeah. I mean, you don't have to take bids, but.
Okay.
Get a night, you know what it's gonna cost.
If somebody has availability, cause sometimes it's tough to get a contractor.
I know, if we wait.
When they're gonna start.
See what, see what you can do and bring it back to us on the twenty-seventh, uh, third.
We'll do.
There you go. And availability.
Right.
How long we been going on with the reservation over this time?
One, one.
Cool.
Well, long time, but, uh, you know, I, I have no idea how to respond to it even, you know. I just, I mean, you've been there with all that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, pardon me.
So onto vouchers, there was another voucher that was.
Yeah, did you look at this?
And then I'll, so then I'll have two vouchers that I need to add, I sent that to all of you guys.
Yeah.
So.
All the vouchers were emailed to us.
So I'll have two additional vouchers, one will be.
The blood draw.
And that one.
The central electric bill for the end of the June, that's our June bill.
That's the new bill.
And it just came this morning.
Oh, that's, okay, the electric service that bills.
Yeah, that's each.
That's, that's June's bill, what we're paying right now is needs bill, she wants to add June's bill on to it. Awesome. Right?
Yep.
Yep. Were you able to look at those vouchers?
I looked at them on, she, on what she sent us online. So. Um, if you wanna look at them.
Those sheets are kind of different, so you don't have to fold them anymore?
No.
Boy, that's gonna save you some space.
Who's bright idea is that? I will continue to, to use the voucher system, probably until next year.
Okay.
And then Ultra, Ultra's changing everything, Janice's Ultra's gonna change, Lee's is.
Oh, look how long the.
Changes here shortly and, and mine, so those are what the new vouchers will look like, all the time. So.
But look at how much space you're gonna save too.
Right.
You should do.
Boy, that's.
Look at them online, there they are, these are all the, um.
Ones that we have, so.
Transmittals.
And payroll.
And payroll.
Mr. Luger, I just have to ask you a question.
What's that?
The fact that, you know, we got you, equalization director. And we've got people out there that are know that they should be telling that they're doing this, and yet they don't. There, nothing comes across saying that they should, or just a slap on the wrist. You know, for them not to declare this stuff. And did I hear you say that two of them from the same family?
Mm-hmm.
And we don't get to know who these people are?
That's something.
Well, we can know who they are.
Okay, who, who are the three, who are the three families we're talking about?
There's three new houses. One is owned by, um, Boston Knipling.
That's the one that we have by, and that's just been up within a year, right?
Yep. Uh, well, no, it's been.
Oh, it's been up there longer than.
So as big as it's been?
I think it would be. The, the construction improvement form that was turned in has a, a new shed on it.
Okay.
It had the mention of the house, as I remember, but it's on the same place, so I called about the shed, and incidentally, there's Boston's house. So we talked about that, it wasn't met very well at all, so I'll have to follow up with that.
Well, let me know, let me know, you can go on another way.
The other one is, uh, Hunter Knipling. And, uh, I did talk with Evelyn, she was in one day, and and told me how to get ahold of them and all this and that, so. And also, uh, there was a construction improvement form submitted by Susan Knipling for Sarah, and I forget her husband's name, but that's a new house as well.
Those guys are up north here or?
Uh, they're off, just north of thirty-four.
Is it houses and sheds and silos, or what?
No, no, it's, it's three houses.
I mean, for new things, like if somebody built a shed, are they supposed to?
A whole building, real property, um.
Something that's not easily movable.
Right, if it's, if it can be moved, uh, then it's not taxable, but. So, right now, there's three houses, to me, that was the most important place to start. Was the three new constructions, and then the new shed. And then just work from there, there's been a couple other sheds put up. I was out in the country and I found one that I'm not even sure, it wasn't there last I saw. And it's not on my list, so I'm gonna check that out and see what that's all about, but this is all, you know, taxable improvements that that the community is missing out on.
Do you still send out that sheet?
But first of all, we don't have a zoning ordinance that requires any, uh, us to ask for a building permit or anything like that.
We don't even have a building permit.
Right, that's.
So. Yeah. You have no way of.
No. So there's, that construction improvement form is sent out with the tax assessments.
Yeah.
And so that, but it's the honor system, I mean, they complete it. It says, you know, your cooperation is appreciated and a couple of them.
Built any buildings.
Yeah, some of them come back, you know, and.
But being there's no zoning ordinance, you're not required to, uh. I mean, that's, it's up to the county to figure out what's out there, what it's worth, I guess.
Yep.
Well, I know in Lyman County, where they've got a reservation, they do require a building permit. And they don't charge for it. But if they do not get the building permit, then they do fine them. And somebody votes.
So we don't have a zoning ordinance that requires.
But, but they don't have a zoning order.
You could have a building permit requirement without a zoning.
Yeah. See, at, at Lyman, they don't have a zoning deal. They just have, because I'm so ignorant and gullible, um, I know this, but, uh, uh, they, uh, make you get a permit, and if you don't use it, or don't get the permit, then there is a fine.
So do we have a?
No, we don't.
Anything that requires a building permit?
No, we don't right now, we could, we don't. Because it was probably in the old zoning laws. That's usually where it's at, there are very few counties that don't have zoning.
Right. And when we dropped ours, we sat ourselves up for this.
That's just one of the issues itself.
But.
That would.
But I, like I said, I did, um.
So could we look into possibility of giving a building permit or whatever?
I've asked him several times.
I can, I can do more checking on it, and, and the only reason I know about it is Dad just built him a shop. And he had to get a building permit, and then if they did, then he, he would have gotten fined for putting that shop up.
Like if we had to.
So how much is the fine?
I, you know, I, that I do not know, he did not say.
The key to that is make the fine big enough that if you want.
Yeah, he didn't say. He just said.
Or make it continue, you know, X dollars a month until. We could ask District Three to look at, uh, give us just a building permit.
Yeah, I, I don't know, Dad didn't say, that's just all he told me. So.
Need a pen?
Yeah.
Pencil. So beyond that, we could, executive session if you needed it.
Can you get ahold of District Three, they're gonna be there Monday.
Okay.
See if we do.
All right, John. Okay.
Because it's ridiculous, I mean.
So, I can reach out to District Three to find out if the guy that's gonna be in Fort Thompson is the guy to ask about building.
Yeah, if, if you want to reach out.
John Clem's gonna be there here, he's gonna be there, Lori. Brian is not gonna be there, Brian was the one that tried to do a zoning.
I'll reach out on email, maybe we can keep it separate and.
If you don't do something about this, I'll just have to, just go on, go on. You sent this today?
No.
I drafted it up this morning, so. And I sent it out to Rod Forton and his group, and then to Wendy Somer and her group.
And I did, uh, Rex, um, I called some other counties. Been on the city gees. And, um, most don't do them. Um, because they don't wanna tie up the money. Um, but the ones that do do them, do very small amounts, and the treasurer does all the work.
So.
Well, did you ask him how much money they have to use it? What percentage of it?
I didn't find out, I.
I did not ask, um, because I know I'm, I'm concerned about the, um, audit coming back and saying we've got too much into CDs, and that we've got to allocate somewhere.
When I talked to you, you said you could put as much.
No, 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 I'm not talking about the bank.
Talking about the bank, or the state auditor, whatever the heck is named. I said, is there a limit, I said, is there a limit to how much you can put in? He said, you can put as much into CDs unless you think you need.
No, that's not. That's not what I'm trying to say, because we always get in trouble for having too much money on hand. Excess, that if we start, we've got two hundred thousand in CDs now, and the other thing they said, and I, and I asked Janice, we've got some of these CDs in for sixty months, and the counties I talked to said they never go over twelve months. Because if you need to get them out.
One month's bill.
Huh?
One month's bill. Eleven months.
I, I'm talking about the sixty-month ones.
I intend putting in, because sixty is.
But I, I'm not, I, until I talk and make sure that we're not gonna get dinged and have to allocate it and bring it back out.
Should we get Janice in?
I talked to Janice.
Where?
She doesn't know.
Janice in there?
No, she doesn't know that answer.
She said, what, the two hundred thousand that she has, and it's broken down into like five.
Yeah, and she just renewed one.
Pull it out.
She just renewed one for eleven months. So there's still some, I'm not saying not do it, but I'm not ready to do it until I know all the answers. I'm not ready to.
Which answers to?
I want to know that I'm not gonna have to jerk it out in a month and allocate it because we've got too much money.
There's like, what's it say on there, there's like one point nine million dollars in the bank, so you planning on spending one point nine million dollars that you'll need to get money back?
That's not what I'm saying, Rex.
So we gotta allocate all two million dollars in our budget, or what you saying?
X amount has to be allocated, we are sitting on more than we are supposed to be.
So, we gotta spend it?
Say that.
I shouldn't say that, I want to talk to Rod Fortner myself.
It doesn't matter where it's at, it's there, because I talked to that two months ago, just to make sure.
You handle it and get us all the answers on a piece of paper and bring it to us.
You won't listen to me anyhow, because I have.
Why are we going through this then?
I guess because you don't want to do it.
But you keep bringing it up.
I'm not saying I don't want to do it.
I'm just bringing it up. Don't bring it up.
I'm just telling you what I found out since our last meeting. That I've been able to, and I haven't been able to get ahold of everybody I needed to.
Okay, don't matter to me anymore, it just don't matter.
So.
But we lost this down the middle place, maybe.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, because we always are in trouble in our audits because we have too much money.
Are you knocking?
Just see if we can get this taken care of. Otherwise, it's another two weeks.
Is that a storm?
Did you, you're getting those ravel rigs?
Mm-hmm.
Are you getting those ravel rigs?
Yeah. Yes, I am.
Kind of like you getting a building permit or some kind of that, although we can.
Yeah.
I mean, letting it get by with it is not gonna solve the problem. When it comes to you. Space.
Don't, wait for a second.
Hmm?
Where should we put this? In the hallway?
Probably would be the easiest access.
That was my thought, but.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Is there a room down by that bulletin board, maybe?
We're next to the church, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve the vouchers?
Uh, move to every.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, I have to work on this part, I'll have to slide it on it, working out the office on Thursday, June twenty-seventh. Leave your name, number, and share a message on the back, you, as soon as possible, thank you.
To people's state of code.
Mm-hmm. I haven't even changed the course now.
Well, maybe we could get him, maybe we could get him on the phone.
Twenty-first.
We are in commissioners meeting right now, and we just a question that came up regarding a meeting. So if you could either give myself a call, or maybe Rex Astor, and I can give him a review of it, thank you, bye.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving.
We'll approve there a second.
If you can, let's try to get him on the phone on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, this is, uh.